And that's Tristan, joined here from my computer.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. It is October 23rd, 402. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll do a roll call of Planning Commission members present. Abby Dolman here, Power Trips. Joey Edwards.
Here.
Jamie Seifer. Okay. County Commissioners, Commissioner Munch.
Here.
Commissioner Marcella. And Commissioner Fiedler. No changes or additions to your agenda?
Nope.
We have minutes to approve from October 3rd.
I move we approve the minutes from October 3rd.
Well, you weren't here. Oh, you were here. Yeah, so let the table those. We will table the minutes from October 3rd. Any updates from staff that you want to give for tonight?
Um, I don't think that we really have anything other than I think that we're potentially having the 1041 conversation on November 13th. I don't know, Commissioner Munch, that you have that.
Not finalized.
Not finalized. But that's a date that we're at least looking at. And so that's still to, that's upcoming, making an application. I think that we had discussed this a little bit. We've had an interview with Community Builders, which is a nonprofit. And we're making application to participate in a workshop called Building Better Places. And so we're hopeful to be able to be participating in that with kind of a vision setting and strategic planning workshop over three days in Glenwood. That would be in March of this coming year. And then you can go into an opportunity to go into technical assistance with them on the strategic plan that you create. So we're going to look to see if we can be as successful in that application process. We meet all of the criteria, size and kind of what's happening within our community. And Community Builders have done engagement with the City of Lethal previously. And so we do look like we have a higher probability of at least being a very viable applicant through that. And then if we wouldn't be successful through that opportunity, CPD would be looking at engagement with a traditional consultant to, with the same outcomes and goals associated with that at the early part of 2024. So that's just some aspirations and goals that are on the horizon for CPD. And I think that we'll also be looking to, we're going to be advertising vacancies on the Planning Commission. And so we're going to get ready to do that and make sure that we've had time and an opportunity for some interviewing with the board and Planning Commission representatives, like we've done in previous vacancy situations. And then we do not currently have any other pending development applications. Yet, but there are several in the works. So I still think that we will probably see something. That first meeting in November, the second meeting, or the first meeting in December. The second meeting in November is kind of hard. And I think that's the day after Thanksgiving. Is that correct? Would be our next, our regular meeting in November. So I was going to probably send out a poll to see if everyone kind of thought that that was a meeting that we need for GO in 2024, that second meeting in November. And then if we have any pending business, we would put that on the first agenda in December, if that sounds good with everyone. So maybe seeing if we could get a consensus or continue that discussion offline. And I think that's pretty much the updates that we have currently in the department. Bryce or CCB, you have anything?
The Colorado Gold Rezone application is December 11th.
Thanks. So you may all recall that Eagles Rise withdrew their application and they have resubmitted. And so thank you so much. That application will be the first meeting in December, December 11th. So that application's pending.
Thank you for that. Okay.
I think the other thing that I should give an update is we have gone into engagement with EPS on our short-term rentals. And so they're right now looking at reaching out to stakeholders. We've identified those as property management companies, homeowner associations, Planning Commission, Board of County Commissioners. And so we're going to continue to identify people that we feel like they should be reaching out in the community to talk to as we go into our full engagement and scope of work with them.
Okay, we have county wall maps approval.
Awesome. So can you enable screen share? Thank you.
Just, I'm sorry. Hey, I'm going to get glasses so I can see the board better.
And on Zoom, whoever is on there as visitor, would you mind please renaming or and/or chatting your name, just so that we have it for the record?
For the record, this is under Brian Brink, this is Charlie Brink.
Thank you so much.
He's using his computer.
Thank you so much.
All right. So since our last meeting, we did get some feedback for the city and county wall maps. I've made a bit of changes, but I'm going to start with the city zoning since it's going to be our reference map. We did change the R1 zoning to a little bit of a lighter gray just to make it a little bit more distinguishable between that and our business district or business zone. Or not business zone. It was to mitigate our TC zone, transitional commercial. But other than that, we did change a little bit of the coloration and included the formula business overlay, which is shown by this light or dark maroon that goes all the way around the central city. And that's something that was per Chapin's request. I do think it does a good job of distinguishing the zone while not causing too much intrusion to the other colors or the city zoning. And then we also added the historic business overlay with a little bit thicker hashing and to make the roads just slightly thicker, just so they're a little bit more visible. And since this is for reference, there isn't much of a premium needed. So I'm open to feedback if anybody does have some right here. We do plan on sending it to the city or to Chapin just for reference. And then we are going to utilize this ourselves, just so we can better distinguish the city borders. It seems to be a topic of interest from prior conversations. And just having something that defines them to the T pretty much.
Looks good. Yeah, looks good.
Good deal. And now onto the main map, our county zoning map. So since our last meeting, I changed the city color to a bright yellow just so you can easily distinguish what the city is compared to all of our other zones. It was a little bit comparable to what we had before. We changed the IM and the multifamily zones down here in Twin Lakes. It was something that was a topic of interest at last meeting. We changed what's vulnerable since. The multifamily was changed to a darker red, just so these Twin Lake sections are distinguishable amongst each other and just to make it a little bit more digestible. Flipped a shades of gray between our wilderness area and then our roadless areas. Something that I think has done a lot of justice. As you can see, once we get out of the standards of all right around here, we then go towards this lighter shade of gray that is then followed by completely white, which I think does a great job of just showcasing that. Showcasing the white wilderness areas as well as roadless. And another good example is something over here by the Mount Massive Wilderness. You can clearly see the corridor that runs through where it goes towards Mount Champion. And then we have wilderness to the north and our roadless areas south of that near Elton. We also, for our backcountry zoning, this hashing, we made it a little thinner and spaced it out a little bit more just to make the, just to open up the areas within it and showcase a little bit more what's inside the backcountry zone since it is a hashing and that's one of the few hashes we have on the map. Something that I think has done justice for us. And then we did make the roads a little bit thicker on this map, just so from afar they can be seen. And I believe that did a great job of just popping out our private roads as well as most of our county roads, the brown roads, the dirt county roads. And those roads are very visible now throughout our hashing as well as just the other zones. I think we've done a lot, put a lot of work into this map. And the last step we're really looking for is just to make it official. And I'm open to feedback wherever anyone may have.
My color blind has been trying to feedback.
No, no. And I believe we did change the stream labels as they were originally above the stream. And that caused some confusion over on the east side. But once we moved them below, it actually cleared it up a bit. And we did originally have the East Tennessee Creek, which it was over the, it was over the highway, pretty much, to where it was just covering up the highway. We got that fixed up.
And then there was something that was confusing between rivers and roads or something, right? So I think maybe that got changed because I don't see.
I think it might have been the color. I think it was a little light and that was getting confused with either the townships or the little sections we had right here when it was a little bit brighter. But I did make it slightly darker. That was something I don't think I remembered doing, just because it was such a quick little color change. But I definitely think we have the contrast we're looking for with the shading as well as the openness with the backcountry zoning, which is something we were really looking at last meeting. The backcountry zoning in particular, just because of how compressed it was.
I remember there being the possibility of mixing up the hashes, but I can't remember what else is hashed.
So the hashes we have as of current, we can actually see them all right here. We have our scenic conservation overlay, which also runs through down between lakes and Highway 91. We also have our PUDs, which are crosshatched. We only have a few. We have the one that's by Grand West. And then we have the rail yard, which is distinguished right here. But on our inset map, it shows it a lot better. So let's go over there. So there's our rail yard PUD right here. And then the only other hashing we would have is that spaced out backcountry zone.
The backcountry here? Yeah, I think, I mean.
Yeah, and the hashing on the backcountry were a lot closer together before. This is much easier to read.
Yeah.
I definitely agree.
I had a hard time seeing the difference between the light gray and the white, but I think once it's.
Once you're zoomed out, I can see it. But when you zoom in, sometimes I'm like, oh, I can't tell the difference. Like that, I can see it.
A lot of that is just the screen.
I do too.
On print, it'll, it'll really pop.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
And I think the most justice that is shown by the backcountry zoning is over here where our roadless areas are. We have Empire Hill and Finnbeck Knob, which once we zoom out, you can see that shading just a little bit better. It does get a little cluttered, but that zoning, that hashing has definitely helped with spacing or with the visualization.
Yeah. So under that backcountry, there's white and there's white gray?
Yes. So the light, the white would follow along this border. And then you can see the light gray once we come over the hash border, past the road. And it comes in and then follows.
Yeah, it's hard to see. But like I said, it could just be if you zoom out, we could see it better, maybe?
So it becomes a little more apparent once we zoom out. And you can see how this roadless area is slightly lighter. And then you have the absolute white that is just outside of that border. And we originally had it to where the darker shading was on the outside. And then we had the lighter shading on the inside and it almost looked like it was inverted.
Right.
Yeah, I think the contrast between the light gray and the white is going to be a lot better inverted. It's really hard to see on the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we can always make it slightly darker. We can, whenever we actually get it printed out, I think is when it'll show the most what kind of shading is visible. So I think that's just a matter of trial on some copy paper and just seeing zoomed in what becomes distinguishable and what you can act to an extent to where we can actually see the border.
Yeah.
Looks good. Thank you.
We need to make a formal.
So what, I guess you can make a motion tonight or we can prepare a resolution for you to approve it. There were just a couple minor adjustments. Okay, they were even fixed. Well, that was how minor and how quick and how good Tristan is. So yeah, you could go ahead and make a motion tonight and then we'll prepare a resolution. Because I do think we should have a resolution on record that you approved the new zoning map. And then we were also talking about we'll get, Tristan's going to work on coordination of actual details for printing with the highest resolution. And then we would be sending out for a digital signature on it. So we'll add a digital signature and we'll be able to get it printed and get wall maps made. And we can prepare a resolution. But if you want to make a motion to have staff or to approve it and then direct staff to proceed with the resolution and the printing options.
Good to hear.
Okay.
Yeah, I move we approve the county zoning map for resolution. That's good enough. That's a good.
Then read seconds.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you, Tristan. Looks great.
Thank you, guys. Good work.
All right. All right, we'll move down to new business. We have files 23-33 and 23-34, which is the Swatch Base Camp Part II, Group Camp CUP and the Site Plan Review. I'm going to start with an opening statement.
Before the opening statement. Tim, did you want to make a statement before we opened the meeting?
Yeah, just real quick for Planning Commission, like I realize that two of my staff have come before you now. So I realized that that is something that I need to work through or develop a policy for. So when the county government staff come before you, everything is clear. I mean, there's no issues with any of this, but I just want to acknowledge that for you guys. I'm getting info from Abby's boss on how Eagle does it. So just for a small community, there will be future applications where my staff come before you. So we're working on putting a policy in place.
Okay. I think, I think that includes staff as well as Planning Commissioners and Board of County Commissioners as well when they are presenting applications. So we'll have a policy to, to address that eventually. So, no.
Okay. The Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. The statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made a part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on a conditional use permit application under Sections 3.6.1 of the Lake County Land Development Code. And simultaneously, the Planning Commission will open the site plan review pursuant to Section 3.1.3. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the conditional use permit application and the site plan review should be approved. In considering the matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in Sections 3.6.1.F and 3.13.3 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to be followed in this hearing will be, one, members of the commission and/or board will disclose any ex parte communications. Two, the county staff will make their initial presentation. Three, the applicant may then make their presentation. Four, after that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present their evidence. Five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission and the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. Six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to make, please simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the Planning Commission and the board and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and the members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then leave the meeting and the Chair of the Planning Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Three, approve the application with newly identified conditions. Or four, deny the application. The Planning Director shall make record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the commission. The commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I will now ask that each Planning Commission member and each County Commissioner, if you've had any ex parte communications, to disclose those now. Joey Edwards.
None.
Abby Dolman.
None.
Heather Lynn, none. Commissioner Munch?
None.
And we don't have anybody else on, right? Okay. Staff may make the presentation.
Thank you so much. Okay, this is file, as you said, File 2333, Swatch Base Camp CUP. It is also Swatch Base Camp Site Plan, Backcountry Site Plan Review, File 2334. So if it's okay, we'll go ahead and talk about both applications simultaneously. It's just easier to present them together. So this is the general vicinity that we're talking about. We're coming off County Road 9, onto Forest Service 103, onto 9A. This is the subject parcel right here. And tonight, we're going to talk a bit about two adjacent residential parcels. This is the Brink family parcel right here and then the Wyatt parcel right here. These two being identified as the most, in the closest proximity to the subject parcel. We should mention, this area is part of the rezone. Went from Ad Forest Street to backcountry zoning. And so this just gives a good idea of the distances between the subject parcel. This would be where the closest yurt in the proposal is. And this would be to the Brink family home. And from here is from the yurt to the Brink property line. Likewise, this is the Wyatt property. So we're going from cabin to cabin here with the Wyatts. I would say that the Wyatts still have work to be done in order for this to be an actual permitted structure, but there is a structure there. And the Wyatt's property here is from the yurt to the property line. So that just gives you kind of a basis of the general proximity of adjacent uses. And of course, as you can see, immediately surrounding this claim, it's a 10.33 acre mining claim, is all San Isabel National Forest. This is the proposal. So you can see the lower outhouse and the upper outhouse. These two sanitary methods did receive a variance. And so they are vault systems with 2,500 gallon tanks. And in the summer, they are serviced regularly. And then in the winter, they can be taken to an appropriate dumping station. You will see the existing yurt and the new yurt here on what the applicant refers to as the lower end. This, of course, is if you're coming in on County Road or Forest Service Road 103, aka County Road 9A. So this would be referred to as the lower end and this is the upper end within the application. So the two yurts, you can see those positions there. All the measurements we're taking from Yurt 1 to show just kind of the proximity between the other adjacent uses. And then the two new, this is the yurt that was present in the last conditional use permit. And this is the new yurt site. And I think we're going to take, this is, this slide gives you an idea of the satellite view and the lay of the land. And then the uses as proposed show there. Backing up just a bit, let me also mention that this dotted line on the claim shows a standard associated with group camp, and that is a 50-foot setback. And this table here just demonstrates where these all are located and then the degree of increase beyond the 50-foot requirement within the standards for group camp. And then to just add on to the satellite imagery, we have the topography. So you can get an idea kind of of the lay of the land in this area. This is the proposed parking plan. And the pictures are to kind of aid what is being suggested in these, these different areas. I will mention that the previous approval did allow, and I should back up for just actually even one more moment. This application is a substantial change to the existing conditional use permit. So there's an existing conditional use permit on the claim for the Iron Mine Mass Camp. In 2021, the applicant came before the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners and was conditionally approved to build two yurts and a sanitary waste method of disposal on, on the site. And they received, I believe, 14 or 15 conditions of approval for that initial 14 conditions of approval for that original CUP. The applicant, since that time, has looked at the sustainability with the two yurts has looked at the sustainability with the two yurts and for future planning reasons, would like to look at a long-term plan of adding two more yurts into the original development plan. That's a substantial change, and our code does not allow for amendments like that under an administrative review. So that's why we're here today to hear this application for conditional use permit. The original conditional use permit camp reference was the Iron Mask Camp. This Part II is being referenced as the Sawatch Base Camp. And in that original approval, five parking spaces were approved. This proposal is asking to double that into 10 parking spaces. And so this parking plan really kind of demonstrates what they are looking for. In this upper U1, they're suggesting that that would be an additional, or that would be four vehicles total. And this U2 area that could sustain, shows one parking space. And then in U3, this is demonstrating that it could accommodate two vehicles. And then in this upper U4 area, this picture shows the one parking space. So the applicant has positioned vehicles in all of these areas to kind of demonstrate scale in those areas. In the lower area, L1 is a driveway of approximately 100 feet long. And that is being suggested able to accommodate three vehicles in this area. And then the lower parking area, too, would be the singular vehicle, as you can see within the photograph there. So this is a parking plan that would expand the degree of use as well. So again, that expanded degree of use is to add two more yurts to the property and five additional parking spaces. This shows is a real good representation of the yurt construction. So the yurt comes in as a kit. And then the foundation that is put in is this tie-down system, which it is, so it's not a full foundation that's put in. And then the platform is built. But this really kind of represents, then the final, demonstrates the process and then the final construction. As it sits on the land, then you can see the colors and just get an idea of how it looks within the natural landscape of the parcel. We have some recommended conditions of approval, but before we get there, let's just back up a bit and go through some items within the staff report. Staff referred this application to the Office of Emergency Management, the Lake County Sheriff, the Level Lake County Fire Rescue, Lake County Public Works, the Colorado Division of Parks and Wildlife, the US Forest Service, and the Lake County Public and Environmental Health. The only updates that we received that were in addition to and different from last time were some additional requirements from the Level Lake County Fire Rescue that have been included in as suggested conditions of approval. And then OEM had a comment that they appreciated the guest guide and the attention to safety and mitigation that was put into that guest guide and that they just asked to add a line under smoking outside is prohibited under a Stage 2 fire ban for situational awareness. You may recall, or new members of the Planning Commission, in the original condition of approval, the Planning Commission brought forth just a concern about really educating the guests of these yurts into backcountry protocol, being educating them before they arrive for good preparation and planning. And so a guest guide was developed and was part of the application that includes just basically guidance on how to both plan for the trip and then what is expected on-site and kind of backcountry norms and expectations to provide guidance to guests in this area. We also, the application was duly noted, hosted, and mailed. And through that process, we do have, when we get to public comment, we have received a letter of concern over extending the degree of use in this area from the Brink family. And so I know that Mr. Brink is in the audience and members of his family are also online today. But I'm happy to read their written comment into the record if they would like, or if they would like to present their own public comments when we get to that point in the discussion. But I would now, like, just to go kind of through the conditions of approval that the previous CUP were subject to, all of these conditions of approval were verified prior to acceptance of the application because we would not be able to look at an expanded use until staff was able to confirm that all the conditions of the existing CUP were compliant. And so the first condition of approval previously had then that they would limit the number of cars to a maximum number of five. This is significant because the applicant in the original application had asked for a total of eight. And there were concerns at that time, and this remains a concern, I believe, of the Brink family in particular, that an expanded degree of use of vehicles and trips on this road would be detrimental in this area. And so one item mitigating factor that staff is suggesting inasmuch as the applicant has applied for 10 parking spots, keeping with the same ratio that was approved last time, that ratio being two cars per yurt and one car for the camping area. And I apologize. In the site plan, there's also a one singular camping, tent camping area that was approved in the original application. So keeping with that same ratio, you will see within the suggested conditions of approval, staff would say reducing that to nine would then resonate with what had been seen before. County Road 103 is a forest service road with an agreement with Lake County to do seasonal maintenance on it in the summer. And the applicant, or I think the Brinks family may have some comments about that. During the winter months, the road is maintained by the snowmobile club. And so we did ask for coordination with this particular commercial use and the snowmobile club to make sure that there was joint coordination in use of the road. And that letter was received by staff and again, included within the documents. The next condition of approval, that really kind of talked about investigating with the Forest Service whether or not, let's see, the applicant shall further investigate the Forest Service requirements for winter access and obtain an appropriate permit prior to winter operations. And if a permit is determined to be needed, the applicant will submit a copy to the Lake County Building and Land Use Department. And so we had to look at that twofold. One, in the conversation that we just had about the winter use of the road, as well as concerns that this particular operation would need a US Forest Service special event or special use permit. And because the activity is inclusive of private property and the road use is allowed, there was no special use permitted required. And so staff did have conversations with the Forest Service and affirmed that no such permit was needed because the activity, the commercial activity is inclusive on private property. The applicant had to follow all the requirements from the Fire Department. And at that time, it was to install smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, mounted fire extinguishers installed in necessary locations. They needed to develop and establish a summer evacuation area should a wildfire occur. And the area had to accommodate a max occupant load. The owner had to mitigate the area according to the home ignition zone. And they strongly recommended the owner install an emergency medical cabinet station in both structures at the time that the two structures were being brought online. The Fire Department has expanded on those requirements at this time. And they did say the areas around the new yurts, as the previous ones, had to be cleared of vegetation to avoid wildfire spread. And then they really reiterated and recommended the first aid kits be equipped with trauma kits, emergency blankets, and emergency food and water. And then again, that all the structures have the smoke and fire extinguishers, the smoke detectors and fire extinguishers. The next condition of approval for the previous conditional use permit was that they had to secure an agreement from the current operator maintaining the winter access. And so that letter has been obtained, and we are in receipt. And we did talk to the snowmobile club. And they confirmed that they are, these operations are in coordination with the snowmobile club's grooming of the access. The applicant had to create the Guest Operation Guide to educate the guests regarding, but not limited, had to educate guests regarding, but not limited to the fire safety, emergency plan, the proper sanitation, the physical requirements of accessing the site and the code of conduct. And so that Guest Operation Guide is in existence and was submitted prior to this application and has been included within the application and sent out to all of the review agencies. The fencing is discouraged. However, if it's used, it had to be wildlife-friendly as defined by Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Additionally, there was some barbed wire fence that was on-site previously, which has been removed. The approval previously was contingent upon compliance with the recommendations from CPW regarding just removal of fire food items and winterization protocol during vacancy and when it's vacant. Just making sure that wildlife attractants are not present and ensuring pet safety. The next condition of approval for the previous CUP was to gain a variance for the sanitary waste, which we've talked about. And the operation could not create any adverse effect on the use of the road. As of today, we have not received a complaint of any adverse effect on the road. However, this continues to be a concern of the Brink family. The camp will not generate any type of noise disturbance, specifically nothing in excess of 70 decibels for a continuous minute at any time. We, again, have not received any noise complaints from the operation. All structures needed to maintain a 50-foot setback and, as demonstrated on the site plan, the application is compliant. That trash containers need to be bear-proof and screened or enclosed to prohibit animal access. Again, compliant. No fireworks on-site. And all statements within the previous hearing and application were conditions of approval. So we did review all of those conditions before accepting this application. Those conditions would remain conditions moving forward if this application is accepted. The areas of concern that the staff focused on in the review were really looking at the density and in relationship to now this being backcountry versus ag forestry. Group Camp allows a maximum density of five people per acre. Immediately, you could see that that would be in violation, really, and not keeping with the intent of backcountry being a very conservation-minded, low-density zone district not created to really look at maximum density allowances. So what is being proposed is taking the density from 28% of that allowable up to 44%, but still staying well underneath the allowable density, maximum allowable, for Group Camp. But staying more in line with what would be conducive within backcountry. The access, again, we've talked about that a little bit. We have verified that there is coordination with a groomer in the winter and also verified with the Forest Service, no additional permits are needed for this operation. We've also talked to Public Works, who did provide some feedback the first time. Said they had nothing new. So it was just maintaining the operation outside of the ride of way so that it could be maintained when it needs to be. The sanitation was something else that we had to look at to make sure that the alternative method that is being proposed could handle the additional occupancy. And so what we discovered in reviewing the information from the engineer who certified that the system is indeed large enough and can accommodate this additional occupancy is that the system was over-engineered to more than accommodate the two yurts and the camping spot that was originally put in. And that's kind of what also drove this application is that the cost to develop this site, along with the engineering cost, the engineering cost of the yurts to make sure that they met snow loads and the anchoring system and different engineered aspects of the actual structures themselves really lent itself to have the applicant look at the sustainability, but they could speak more to that. And I think those are really, the strong areas of focus that we looked at was, and just to kind of reiterate, it was making sure that the existing conditional use permit was in good standing, was in compliance with all the conditions that had been brought forward. A review of the density and the new zoning, going from ag forestry into backcountry, making sure that this density wasn't pushing any kind of maximum standards. So certainly for the Board, Planning Commission and the Board to determine if 44% of the maximal allowable is in line with the backcountry. And then that road access and parking. And so if we kept more in line with what the first approval was granted, that would keep car maximum allowable amounts at nine if we kept with the same ratio instead of the 10 that has been proposed by the applicant. There was also a question, I think at one point, about fire pits. And we discovered that they went with, we had talked about in the first application, wanting to make sure that fire bans are adhered to and that there isn't possibility for inappropriate fire use. And so those fire pits, and again, the applicant talked a little bit more about it, but my understanding is they're actually removed. So they went with a fire pit that was approved and suggested by the Fire Department, and they're actually removed at times that it would be inappropriate for use to just make sure that the area is free from any kind of outside additional risk. And I don't think that I have anything else. You have been provided to, I should speak just a little bit, I apologize. I should speak just a little bit about the backcountry zoning site plan review because this is subject to that as well. And so the areas, specific areas incidental to that review are site disturbance. And so again, there's not going to be any grading or excavation in the construction of these additional two. They're looking to create two-level building sites, each approximately 400 square feet in area. And they have the anchoring system, which means relieving the need for any kind of foundation excavation. There's also no underground or gas or electric lines being installed and no well drilling. And so the only lighting might be some solar lighting, but keeping certainly in line with dark sky compliant methods. There are, the two proposed building sites for the yurts do not have significant slopes as identified on the site condition map. And so slopes are another area of concern in backcountry. We also look to identify if there are any streams, water bodies, or wetlands. This location is free of any of those kind of elements. The building materials really wanted- The building materials, really wanted to be able to visually demonstrate that to give you an idea of how the yurt looks in respect to the natural environment. Fencing, again, no fencing is planned to be installed. And if the need ever arises, it would have to be that wildlife friendly fencing. Exterior lighting, no exterior lighting is planned. And in the event, anything would come on site, it would have to be dark sky compliant. And the tree removal, tree removal is going to be consistent with that home ignition zone that's been endorsed by, through the fire review to reduce wildfire risk and mitigation, increase mitigation and reduce wildfire risk. All the site setbacks have been increased to meet the 50-foot setback. Fire mitigation, we've already really talked about, but we did have to have the fire department review their fire mitigation plan, and that has been approved. Geologic mining and environmental hazards, there are existing there are existing steep slopes and remnants of surface mining activities from 1930s to 1970s. But these slopes have sat for nearly 50 years and come to a natural angle of repose and are not a threat to guest safety. Natural manmade hazards on the land have been adequately mitigated and there are no present mine shafts or other safety issues present on the property. So that really brings about the focus of the backcountry site plan review. And there are several conditions being suggested for that. One, just all statements representation become binding and that the applicant will ensure site preparation and your placement will not have an adverse effect on drainage or erosion. And the forest service continues to suggest to most applicants, this applicant included, that a survey would help to ensure proper location of property lines. It is a suggestion and not a condition of approval, as it was last time. Those three conditions are the same conditions that we posed to the, as recommended, recommendations last time. And they were then applied at the final approval last time. So we're just staying consistent with those. And I think that wraps up everything that I have on the presentation, unless there's some questions.
I think we'll let the applicant make their presentation and then we can go to questions.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have much to add to him, staff report, so thank you, Ann. I just wanted to kind of address a couple of points. First one about the survey, actually, is that the forest service came through the month after my original CUP and surveyed the land for me. They're actually planning on doing some big fire mitigation projects surrounding my parcel. So they wanted to get those boundaries really well defined. And so all the geospatial data you've seen in my presentation was based on those survey markers of the forest service two years ago. So they are pretty accurate, or as accurate as they can be. But yeah, our intent is, this is my wife Carly, Bryce Erlich. Our intent is just to create a low-impact group camp that's a responsible alternative to the camp that we have in this camp. All right, we all know that we have dispersed, a big desire and demand for dispersed camping. This camp is designed to be low-impact, but also push people into a responsible recreation opportunity right through the sanitation and everything like that. I would like to say that, you know, we're only pursuing this because our existing sanitary system that we got approved was so overbuilt that it can actually accommodate these additional two yurts. But it kind of creates a natural limit, like, you know, we're not intended to come back and ask for any more yurts because that would require us to get a new sanitary system, which was the most expensive and disturbing part of the entire plan. Those tanks were pretty big, but now we have the capacity to handle the full occupancy through the entire winter. But you know, we try to go low-impact. That's why we chose the yurt design we have, which doesn't have a permanent foundation. The only lasting impact from the yurts, if they were to be removed, would just be the flat spot before it's where the roughly flat spot that's there. But we're trying to use the existing topography on the land that is there from service work done from the 30s to the 70s to our advantage. So no grading is planned. We don't need to make any driveways. The existing parking spots, which are well off the roadway are already there, there are existing flat spots. So we're trying to use topography to our advantage and make a camp that's compatible with the existing way of the land rather than change the way of the land. Part two was designed really intentionally to reduce impacts on our neighbors. You know, we heard the Brink's family's concerns from our first CUP. And so when we were prepping part two's CUP, we made extra sure to address some of those concerns. Not only with the parking and getting people off the roadway and that guest guide, which kind of educates the users so they know what's proper etiquette and expectations. But also with the placement of the new yurts themselves. So there will, under our proposed site plan, there is no improvement that will be closer to the closest existing private cabins than the closest existing yurt. The first one we have in CP one. Every other improvement we will have will be further away. We're going to direct all guests through from the turquoise lakeside so they don't actually have to go through any private property by the time they exit a county road to get to Swatch Base Camp. So they don't have to drive through anything. There is the St. Keven Loop, which is a forest service road, kind of designated county road mix that goes beyond our property, which creates a great egress in case of emergencies. But the St. Keven Loop is pretty rough anyways, so it makes more sense to guide guests in where they don't impact private property and they don't have to go through that more rough section of the road. You know, keeping the road clear is paramount to our plan. There's so many different kinds of users on this road throughout the summer. I would say the primary user on this road is actually mountain bikers, training to the races. There's five separate trail series that basically use this section of road. And so we've been able to avoid user conflicts to this point, and that's our intent is to continue to avoid any user conflicts and so that everyone can enjoy this section of backcountry. But yeah, that's all we have. Thank you, Ann.
Does someone have a clipboard?
Thank you.
If it's okay with the planning commission, I'll just go to public comment first. I have John Brink first. Do you have anything you'd like to add? Or do you want them to read the letter into record, or would you rather speak?
No, the letter will be covered by him.
Okay, I'll let you go ahead and do that.
That's a family letter.
Okay. I have it open too, if you want me to read it.
Which paper do you prefer?
I can read it. October 9th, addressed to the Lake County Planning Commission and County Commissioners. In response to the addition to the Swatch Base Camp Part Two Group Camp CUP and the site plan review, 2071 County Road 9A, Leveaux, Colorado 80461, we are resubmitting our previous letter of concerns along with pictures, letter and pictures attached. We would like to bring up some of the points and amendments that were discussed in the original Lake County CO 7221 Planning Commission meeting. The biggest concern we have is the traffic and access that goes through the property. It was stated by Mr. Erlich that Mike Irwin said it was a Schedule A road graded every three years. Again, in the 50-plus years, we have yet to see Lake County Road and Bridge or the Forest Service maintaining County Road 9A. The question was brought up, at what point is it determined that the road needs repaired and who has a say in it? Sarah Mudge said that it was a good question between Schedule A and B and which list it gets on and that it was probably a Forest Service question. Was there ever a resolution to this question? The commission also addressed the parking situation along the one-lane road through the property. It was proposed that four or five cars would be allowed on site. It was proposed four, Mr. Erlich asked for five with the tent site. It was amended for five vehicles at any one time. The question here is with adding two more yurts, is this going to increase to 10 vehicles? And if it was determined that five vehicles were allowed, where is proposed parking for the additional two yurts? Will Forest Service property now be used as parking to support a business for profit? It was stated by Erin Palin, as the popularity grows, the more inexperienced people get involved. We agree that with more people comes more potential for problems. Howard Tripp brought up that it was important people enjoying his property, not others. With more people, it is more likely that there could be problems. Along with the inexperience comes the risk of fire danger. Heather Lynn stated that there should be a limit on the size of a fire with the stoves that were planned. It was also recommended that lockable fire pits be used. Are lockable fire pits being used? Again, we feel more people, more problems. On this 10-acre lot divided by a public road, a 50-foot setback for structures, a roughly quarter acre not usable under the power lines, and two yurts and outhouses already on site. How is this consistent with the original CUP? That the camp is designed to be incredibly low-impact and to leave the landscape intact as much as possible? We do hope that this plan is meant to provide a safe and responsible alternative to camping, as stated in the original CUP. However, commercializing this area increases risks. Sincerely, the Brink family. And then they have attached their original letter from the previous application. Do you want me to read that into the record as well?
You can go ahead and read it.
Yeah, so their original letter that came with the original CUP was dated June 23rd, 2021. Section A, Section C, 3.6.1.F of the general project narrative states, Forest Service Road 103 is maintained year-round by Lake County Road and Bridge during the summer months and the snowmobile association in the winter months. With research done, Forest Service 103 is a Forest Service-owned, county-maintained road under Schedule A maintenance agreement as a Level B road. We understand this to be a three-year maintenance schedule for a four-wheel-drive dirt road, which means little to no regular maintenance. In over 15 years, we have not seen Lake County Road and Bridge maintain the Forest Service 103. It cannot be assumed that the snowmobile association will always maintain or groom the road during the winter months under their own CUP with the Forest Service. Section C, 3.6.1.F, number six and number 11 states, vehicles will park in a pre-existing flat area of the property, up to eight vehicles without impeding the roadway. This is our biggest concern. Forest Service 103 is a one-lane road with steep embankments in some areas. How can we assume no more than eight vehicles will be parked at any one time with a maximum of a 14% person occupancy? We are concerned that the road may be blocked or partially blocked at times, limiting through access on the road. There is a little side-by-side parking in the designated parking areas. Who is going to enforce the parking to ensure the road is not blocked with parked vehicles? This could limit our access to our own property and other traffic accessing the road for recreation. Any dirt work performed for parking could result in erosion from rain and snow melt, especially along the steep slopes. And they have some pictures that they attached on here as well that should have been sent to all the planning commission and county commissioners. As previously mentioned, the biggest concern is parked cars blocking the road and how that will be enforced. We have all seen how people, sorry, we have all seen how people have parked along roadways to recreate outdoors, especially this past year. Thank you, Jenny Swanko. Any additions you want to make to that before I move on to the next public comment?
Yes, I do want to make another comment. I'm sorry. This is Charlie Brink. I recently found out that it's been turned to backcountry zoning and I didn't, I didn't know a whole lot about that. So I looked it up on the county's website and in that website, it says here to retain the relatively undeveloped character of backcountry areas in Lake County while still allowing very low-impact development. Number two, it is not the intent of the district to promote any commercial opportunities, but rather to accommodate personal use by the property owner. To agree, any improvements, any improvements as permitted are not intended for short-term rental. Though further down in the, in the article or the paper there, frequently asked questions under backcountry structures, it states that it cannot exceed over 600 square feet. The two yurts that are there now equal 567 feet. Two more yurts will equal 1,134 square feet. Again, no short-term rental use. And this is, like I said, this is all coming from backcountry zoning under the county's website. Examples were yurts and small cabins. Another question was brought up, can I build a backcountry, can I build two backcountry structures on my property? The answer says no. Already has two, there's already two under there now, so they can put four. Just clarification on all this, I'm not sure. The thing is, I think within only a year or two of the county adopting the backcountry zoning, that it reflects negatively on the county allowing a development like this that is violating the regulations of the newly adopted zoning as well as setting a precedent to zoning becoming a free-for-all. I appreciate you guys listening to us and thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, we still have somebody named Visitor and we don't have, we need to know who you are for the record, please. If you can either rename yourself or unmute and let us know who you are. On Zoom, is there somebody named Visitor who can please unmute and let us know who you are? Yes, I don't know where. Okay, and I have, next on here, I have Kinga, and sorry, I will butcher your last name.
It's okay, we have some.
Oh, see, I would have told you.
First one of all, thank you. So I just have a story to tell. So since we moved to Leveaux, we've been looking for opportunities to go for the backcountry hikes with our little toddler now, history. But we went to the privately owned yurts on the other side of the town. And that was quite of the hike and we thought we'll never do it again. And then we found out about Sawatch Camp from our friend, who's, by the way, legally blind. And she did the hike. I'm like, okay, if you could do the hike, then we could do it as well. We did it in the winter. It was the hike from the golf course all the way to the first yurt with a two-year-old. And it was wonderful. And I just think everyone should have the opportunity to be able, get out there and just experience that. I think that's all what I have to say.
Thank you. I have a couple others showing up on Zoom. Are there any others that want additional public comment? And if so, you can either raise your hand or unmute. Okay. If you have any else, county planning commission or county commissioner have any questions for applicants and/or public speakers?
Clarifying the zoning.
Yeah, yeah, clarifying backcountry, yep.
So happy to, Charlie brought up some really good points and I think so it'd be really good to kind of clarify that backcountry zoning is all of the things that you said, but there's two different types of use that the code talks about. Short-term rentals is a separate use. We don't, we have group camp is the one commercial, group camp and vacation lodge is the one use that is allowed in backcountry zoning from a commercial standpoint.
With this conditional use permit.
With a conditional use permit. So the zone district doesn't condone extensive commercial activities and it absolutely prohibits what, a singular use as a short-term rental. So short-term rentals in our code and group camp vacation lodge are two distinctively different uses. And so short-term rentals are prohibited. By definition, short-term rentals are under a different use than group camp. So immediately I could see they're taking that out of context, exactly what you said. That makes perfect sense of like, why would you question, immediately question, why is this application even coming forward? It looks like it is in conflict with the zoning. So a lot of careful vetting, backcountry took over 10 years to develop. And so a lot of careful consideration went into a very, very restricted lens on commercial. You won't see any other zone district in our zoning that allows types of commercial use that is as restrictive on commercial as backcountry is. So it's got this singular type of commercial use that is only allowable under a conditional use permit. But our table of uses has a variety of different commercial uses that are available. So while, so in that context, it is restrictive towards a litany of commercial uses. It has a singular, very intentional commercial use. And then the square footage again speaks to private individuals. And then the square footage again speaks to private individual dwelling units. And so if you are using, if you are located in the backcountry and you are a private user, you are limited in square footage, square footage to not only the dwelling unit, but you can only have one accessory use. So private use that is a use by right that has no conditional review is limited in size and the number of structures. So again, this is coming under the one conditionally allowed commercial use in the backcountry and it has to go through this level of vetting to be able to be considered. And so, but I can immediately see, given the language that you brought forward, that that seems like it's in a direct contradiction to our zoning. But hopefully that kind of just helps explain why this, why this application is allowable. But it went through that very long vetting process of trying to determine what degree, if any, of commercial opportunity could be available in this zone district. And this is that one singular commercial use that, that is allowed conditionally.
And just to expand really briefly on one piece you just said, I think that helps with that the most is use by right things, meaning a private use of a individual home. There is no hearing. There's a site plan review that's handled, I think, down administratively. And the group camp is one of the only options that somebody, if they meet the needs and the definitions without adverse impact, could be approved, but through a conditional use permit, which is why we're here today. And each individual yurt will meet that backcountry structure, square footage requirement. As proposed here anyway. So that's kind of, just wanted to expand just briefly on that.
No, thank you. Maybe that helps round that out.
Thanks for clarifying that, throwing that up for us.
And I think, I think it's fair to say that like, we certainly don't want to see every single mining claim up on, in that area going, turning into use like, like this one is proposing. I think that's, I, I mean, that, that I think as its total would be, would, would be too dense, would be too developed. So for what it's worth, you guys got in quick and first. So, so I would, I would think like as the planning commission like continues to review special use, conditional use permits like this, that, that would be something that would, we would want to take into account.
Yeah. Correct, yeah. I had a, a couple of questions for the applicant. Obviously there were no, as Anne mentioned, there's no formal complaints made on any road issues or really any of these issues on here. But have you had any issues with people not knowing to not park on the road? Have you run into that problem where people are parking on the road and you've got to go get them to move their car or creating any kind of issues that way?
The only person that's ever blocked the road was a trespasser, actually. When I came upon it just a couple of weeks ago, they were parked in the road and they were down looking at my yurts. And I was like, excuse me, what's going on? So that was the only, yeah, and I was like, I think you should just pull the driveway even better. But, but that's the only thing I've never had an issue. Like you said, it's, it's so well used in the summer that it would be really hard pressed to not know there's a road there and that you shouldn't be blocking it, in my opinion.
And then what, what is the, Anne touched on it a little bit, but what is the fire stove situation or firing situation?
So we went with solo stoves, which are just like a readily available, kind of familiar to a more, a less backcountry experienced person, right? Someone that maybe has only been experienced in the city. They would have some familiarity with it. The other thing about solo stoves is, we were talking about the lockable ones, but the solo stoves you can actually remove and replace with a sign that says fire ban present, just to further discourage it. And then what I really like about the solo stoves is they do a really good job of efficiently burning. So the fires tend to burn more completely and leave less charcoal and, you know, flammable material behind. It makes it easier for the guests to actually make sure that they don't have any fire hazard when they leave.
We'll go through our questions I got.
I guess that just piggybacks just really, like, what is your kind of summer management? Like, like, do you interact with every guest? Do you?
Oh, interact with them like via app.
Yeah.
But we're going for more like an established method that existing mountain divisions and other Hudson counties, which is a more remote, you know? The plan is to be, to turn over at least every week, once a week, or more frequently than that, just to keep up on it. But it's going to be more of like a remote interaction, right? Where you're messaging them through the app directly to the website, which has the guide and the maps and everything like that.
And you guys like, and I don't know if, like, someone stays local or is aware when, I guess, I'm just, I'm sure this is in your guestbook. Like, you know, if you guys are going out of town, do you try to coordinate and make sure that there is someone else, like if there was an emergency?
For sure.
Up there.
Yeah, yeah. One of the requirements of our guest guide was like a 24 hour non-emergency contact. So the guest guy has that non-emergency contact, which is me, and then there's someone always in Lakeville that I can contact to, you know, be a point person if there is need be. I have friends that kind of run solar operations and stuff like that, that I've asked about this and, you know.
That's how they handle it.
That's how they handle it. And also there's just kind of an agreement that we can rely on each other in the case that we leave for two weeks in high seasons.
One more question. What is the anticipated occupancy rate of the four yurts moving forward?
I mean, I would hope 100%, but I don't. There's certain parts, like mud season, for sure, we're going to be closed, right? Like basically Halloween through Thanksgiving, there's just not a good way to get up there because the snow has completely covered the road. So you can't drive all the way up, but you can snowmobile up. And then that's also when it would be most destructive on that four wheel drive road, right? You don't have the mud season. And then similarly, when the snow starts melting out in late April, you can't snowmobile, you can't drive up there. So there's a good like two to three months a year where we just can't be open realistically. Our goal is to, you know, shoot 30% occupancy, but I think 50% is more realistic. And then within that, that, that's just pure bookings. I, I said this in my application, but like, you know, we have to bring this in under maximum total vehicles we foresee and maximum occupancy we foresee. But I foresee that the instances of this being at max occupancy on any given day would be really rare. Because, you know, we're going for 4% occupancy in the yurt and it's really better for a couple. Maybe like four people and then two kids would be comfortable, but four adults would be pushing it. And so trying to market towards that, like this is more for a couple, but if you want, if you have a poor person and family with two kids, it may work for that too. Thank you.
Sarah, did you have any questions?
Um, I don't, I don't think I have any questions for the app. Well, there's just a couple things, which I think is pretty clear in the staff report. But just to reiterate a little more strongly, I think Anne touched on a few of these things, like item four, it says surrendering agreement for the winter access, for winter operations. It doesn't actually say grooming, so I just want to be sure that we are like saying that this is not like grooming or plowing. And I think that might be inherent in the application, but as, as conflicting or other interests come, I think that's important to just state outright. And that's over the snow, like winter use, which I don't think is conflicting with the applicant's intentions. Cause that would pose a whole other several problems for other counties' intentions and other operators or recreation uses. And then item eight, which the applicant also mentioned, it just doesn't say. It says various granted, variants granted by the Board of Health, applicant showing sanitation approval. And, and it just, I don't know if it's exactly familiar to those who aren't in the lingo, that that is already approved. It was well beyond the first capacity, like volume, you know, that's, those are just two moves I want to say.
I do have one last question for the applicant. Are the parking spaces signed or they, I mean, are they designated? If somebody was going up there, they was just dealing with it through the app, are the parking places designated in some way?
The, the one, two, yeah, the lower yurt is very clear, the driveway, and just playing that out. I've been thinking about how to make the other ones a little bit more clear besides just having four doors in it.
Is signage an option?
Yeah, signage is definitely an option. I have parking signs. I'm just trying to find the right ones that are compatible with the general character of the land and don't stand out too much, but are also necessary. But it's definitely a plan, is normal parking, people parking in other places.
It's going to be such tight parking anyway, it would seem. Yeah, making it as clear as absolutely possible.
Yeah, I have no problems with being mandated to sign it, so.
Have you run into issues with over, you know, more vehicles coming and where is any direction for the number, any, any number of vehicles that might be beyond the capacity or the restrictions?
No, but the website we want to use does have vehicle restrictions built in. So that's kind of how I wanted to address that is just make it like very clear that you can have up to two vehicles per restriction.
Well, and I guess I would say, and I guess, do you know how, how often there were two vehicles per yurt up there? Cause I'm just thinking how small they are that, I don't know, who's driving two vehicles up there to, yeah, for, for your year.
Right, yeah. And I think the intent is that, and Anne and I talked about this when we were going over the staff report because, you know, she brought up that this is a concern and I, I agree. And so we could maybe add some language in that encourages shuttling or encourages vehicles.
And along the same lines, what if somebody had a vehicle, but they had a trailer? Would it be, I mean, is there even a way to turn something like that around on that road?
Be good. I do. There is a turnaround spot that people use. It's a little further down actually, towards the Brink Cabin. But that's not something I'd considered actually, if you're running vehicles up there or trailers up there in the summer.
Just in the summer, an ATV trailer, Razor trailer, that kind of thing, it should get some of the use of.
Yeah, there's a good turnaround spot, like a frequent turnaround on my property for just a vehicle, but I'm not sure it would accommodate a trailer.
Right.
Maybe just adding that verbiage. It's not very conducive to that, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, on that, not necessarily here, I guess.
Right.
I don't know right now with any of the designated parking, except maybe the one long space, there wouldn't be a way to have a vehicle and a trailer.
I mean, I wouldn't want to take a trailer up there.
Right.
So discouraging them upfront. I think it just makes the most sense.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think there's turnaround spots, actually, especially as you come to the property. There's this nice flat open spot that's used by recreational and dispersed campers a lot. They're actually planning to turn that around. But once you actually get onto the property, it'll be a little bit more difficult, so.
Gotcha. I guess that's something to consider.
Yeah, I'm sure we can add something into the user guide or whatever, to appropriate.
To address one of the questions in the Brink letter about, did we ever find out who gets to decide when Lake County dumps maintenance on 103? Or we don't know still?
Or even who would be responsible at this point?
Lake, Lake County is responsible. It's a, it's a agreement they have with the Forest Service. It's a Forest Service road, but by Lake County taking on that Schedule A, they actually get highly funding for it. Now, the, the schedule of maintenance and the, you know, the frequency, I can't speak to, but I know it's
Public Works was the one. They were, and, but Michael did not give me a schedule on how.
On how they do that, yeah.
Yeah. So I do not have any indication of any scheduled maintenance from Public Works.
Yeah, I didn't, I did not get any clarity. But there are, I think the Schedule A roads are supposed to be on a three year cycle. So that list of roads changes annually based on going through our system, Forest Service system. And then there are other roads that some, they never get Public Works attention. For Forest Service guidance and others that might, might have a tenure. I'm sure if there's an issue, they kind of get that and take that into consideration on their assessments seasonally.
Eric Lane, I saw your hand up.
A suggestion. Perhaps trailers could be counted as another vehicle. So a vehicle pulling a trailer would need two parking places?
Yeah, there's just only really one spot that would allow that to happen, I think, is the problem. Most of the others are either only designated for one space or they're side by side. But yes, thank you. And yeah, I, I think the only comment I have is I definitely don't discount any of the concerns the Brink family has. I think that as long as the applicant can continue to keep the road clear and keep his, keep his operation on, within the property, I don't think that this density is, is too much for that property. I think four yurts is, is fine. Agreed that if it were 10 mining claims side by side that all wanted that, that would be a totally different conversation, even three side by side. I, I definitely would be opposed to any further expansion on this property. I think this is going to be maxed out. But it sounds like the applicant already agrees with that. And, you know, I, I feel like a lot of the concerns that were brought up in this letter seem to be mitigated with the fire rings and things like that seem to be fairly well handled by the applicant based on the application. Any questions or further?
Do you? Do you, are you guys, do you have any ETB accessory use or OHB or encouraging or not really addressing? You can see what the F would be, because somebody could drive their OHB up and out the car, right?
They could.
Certainly not the expectation of snowmobile in wintertime. Yeah, we've seen that as probably not very, well, I want to change the question.
That's not really good. We're not encouraging or discouraging any kind of access to the site, right? It's a multi-user trail. We like that about it. We want to keep it that way. So vehicles are obviously the easiest way to get up there, but yes, side by sides go by every day and even mountain bike go up there. Mountain bike all the way.
Or you can hike up there.
Or you can hike. Yeah, you can, you can do that too. I do think that brings up a point though, where in this, in the wintertime, if we have a vehicle limitation, the snowmobile falls under that, that's going to be really tough. With having that, you know, a snowmobile limit that's significantly less than total occupancy. So maybe making, yeah, I think that's clarity on that would be great. Just the vehicles, I, I think Anne's condition with the nine vehicles, I wanted 10, but I think nine, keeping with the numbers for a preuser, makes a lot of sense. You know, we don't have any injections to that, but if we could just make it clear that, that doesn't mean we're limiting it to nine snowmobiles maybe? Or, you know, cause each snowmobile is one person to the preuse.
Yeah, maybe that each space, whatever is, fits within that space, right? I mean, that parking space is parking, they're allowed up to nine parking spaces and whatever access vehicles are used are contained within those spaces.
That would address the trailer issue as well.
All right, any other?
I think it's just one of those two where the road is not impacted during the winter. So I think it's, at that point, it's more of a density thing. You don't want, you know, 30 up there, like 30 would be too much, but, but the reason why we have the parking limit now is
but the reason why we have the parking limit now is, is I think more to do with road condition.
And I think, like, there's a part of me also that, like, aesthetically and whatever, getting in with the environment, want to have a parking lot up there, basically. Uh, any other questions, comments, staff, commissioners?
Do we have a layer for our CUPs? I was just thinking about, like, visually, you know?
The problem would be they're all different, right? We need to do it.
Well, but just to, like, be able to see, like, in this zone, are there five CUPs? So is there a special event for, that falls under a different, you know, like? That would be, no, I think, I think, and I think that's kind of where we're headed with the software platform that we're getting ready to implement, that we're going to be able to have that parcel data that will show all of the building and land use entitlements. So I think eventually we'll be able to add a layer where you'll be able to see. But we could start managing, because I, I will say that's absolutely, I was pulling up an old CUP from, I think, 2011 or 2010 today, and I was looking at some of the conditions, and I do think that we didn't inherit any kind of institutional knowledge about review, review schedules. Of course, of course, it's on the applicant to be cognizant of, you know, when they need to have those done. But honestly, since I've been with the department, there's only two CUPs that are really good at sending in their annual reviews and starting to come upon some in, you know, in the history of the department that did have an annual review. So we're definitely looking at a way to capture that, to try to capture them as we find them. And then anything, obviously, that we've created that requires a review mechanism. I think we only have, we've only actually come up with one so far. The Climax Revival has a annual review associated with it. But we're gonna, we'll be creating a better internal monitoring system of that, as well as I think this new platform will really help too, so that we can really make sure that we're capturing all of that data and then, and that absolutely can help with creating some different layers so that we can quickly identify where these uses are. Absolutely, I think, I think that's incredibly relevant. We, you know, we kind of capture it when we do the development review, when we look at the adjacent park properties, and of course, every applicant has to identify adjacent zoning and uses, but sometimes, like in that country, we should be a little bit broader than our 500-foot of notification area, so.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Edwards moves to close the public portion of the year.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, Commissioner.
Thanks for coming.
Jack, you're welcome to stay and hear the outcome.
I'll be, he can't hear it. The only additional, and maybe it's not necessary because maybe it was somehow covered. It's hard to, like, keep track of them. Yeah, but, and maybe we had it in the original one, it's, I mean, it's kind of an obvious condition, but just that they can't operate in the winter if there's not a current agreement with the snowmobile club to maintain that right.
Right.
That would be, that was the only thing that I felt like was.
Was a little, yeah, we do have that letter from Ron, but.
Right, but if, like, ever it was.
Absolutely.
Apart, just to make it so that it's not a.
Can I ask a quick, my question then?
The staff? Yeah.
Just like, what if that road falls out of their grooming schedules? There's other group camps that are accessed by trails that aren't groomed either.
So my question is, doesn't Forest Service require, if you're using it, to have an agreement in place? Whether it's, whether it's the snowmobile club or itself, for any kind of commercial operation.
For commercial operation, I do, I think that we could absolutely look into it because I do think that part of the discussion that I had with Forest Service was in recognition of when we were looking at.
Because I know that's even what they said when they were talking.
When we were looking at the review, there was definitely a recognition of that being in existence and asking for, they, they also asked for joint coordination as well in the conversation that I had.
Any maintenance or improvements performed by the proponent or non-system round trail would require a special use permit from your Forest Service, including over the snow use?
Yeah, so what I, when I talked to the Forest Service, that was essentially, I'm not allowed to groom by myself. I can't groom or make the trail, but people are still allowed to access private property for public use.
So we could craft some, craft the conditions somehow that way, that.
Oh, would you word it?
That they either have the, an active agreement with the snowmobile association or approval from the Forest Service for their use, guest use, whether that's, yeah. Because, right, they could just get a water from them, saying, yeah, this counts as regular use, so it's fine.
Right, right, I think, yeah, just to make sure that that is not contingent upon some kind of grooming method and that commercial would not, use would not be.
I think they have, yeah, one or the other. If they have the agreement with the snowmobile club, then.
Or confirmation from the Forest Service that, no, that a special use permit is not required.
Yeah.
Would the Forest Service party again, permission from the Forest Service?
Or confirmation from the Forest Service that a special use permit is not required to access via the Forest Service 103?
That grooming is not required? Or confirmation from the Forest Service that?
That, that.
A special use.
Special use permit, confirmation, the special use permit is not required.
For access, for winter access.
For winter access. And it may not be.
Yeah.
But it would be just better to have that.
Yeah, absolutely, that makes good sense. The other change was to parking, and what I came up with, "On-site parking shall be provided and be limited to no more than nine parking spaces, and all vehicles onsite must fit in the designated parking spaces."
Yeah.
Does that?
I think so.
That work for snowmobiles?
I think so.
And for trailers and those?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, we have two motions, so. Do the CUP first?
Sure. All right, and everybody is on the floor, correct? Did we get that far?
Well, we'll go along, yeah.
Fair enough, all right. Edwards moves to plan and commission recommend approval of file number 23-33 Sawatch Base Camp CUP to the Board of County Commissioners with the following conditions. Number one, file number 23-33 Sawatch Base Camp is considered as an application for revision to the conditionally approved land use file number 21-10 Iron Mask Camp. As such, this approval is contingent upon compliance with all conditions of approval for said file, unless amended by new conditions in this approval. Number two, onsite parking shall be provided and be limited to no more than nine parking spaces, and all vehicles onsite must fit inside those designated parking spaces. Number three, there should be no guest parking on or impeding traffic along Forest Service Route 103, also known as County Road 9A. Number four, the applicant shall address all of Lake County, led by the Lake County Fire Rescue and Office of Emergency Management comments provided within the staff report prior to the start of any operations. Number five, all statements and representations made by the applicant in this application and in hearing should be binding and considered as conditions of approval. And further finding, that number one, that the proposed conditional use is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies contained in the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Number two, that the proposed conditional use conforms to the requirements and provisions of this code. Number three, that as conditioned, adequate public safety transportation and utility, utility facilities will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development. Number four, that as conditioned, the proposed conditional use is not likely to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of county residents or to cause hardship for neighboring persons. Number five, that is conditioned, the proposed, the proposed conditional use is consistent with and in harmony with the neighboring land uses and future intended land uses in the area. Number six, that as conditioned, the proposed conditional use will not result in overly intensive use for the land relative to the surrounding land. Number seven, that is conditioned, the proposed conditional use will not result in traffic congestion or hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Number eight, that as conditioned, the proposed conditional use will not unnecessarily scar the land on which such use would be located. And number nine, that as conditioned, proposed site for the conditional use is and will be freed from natural or man-made hazards or that such hazards can and will be adequately mitigated.
Second, sorry.
She's like, why are you looking at me?
Making eyes at me? Mr. Howard, use your second.
I know. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay, Joey Edwards?
Yes.
Abby Dolman?
Yes.
Heather Lindup?
Yes.
On the site plan, the only condition I saw in there that's not necessary anymore is the Forest Service survey because it was already done.
Because I missed the last one. I didn't, the one that we wanted to read in.
Oh, we need to make an amendment to that motion?
Sorry, we do.
You start at the top?
Yeah, just say, no. You have to read it all over again.
Just make a motion to add. With great power comes good.
Just to make a motion to amend your previous motion for that same file number.
Edwards makes a motion to amend. To amend.
Your motion of approval for file 23-33.
Thank you. The motion of approval for file 23-33 Sawatch Base Camp CUP. Adding, adding to our motion, point number six, that Sawatch Base Camp must have a current grooming agreement from the snowmobile club or confirmation from the Forest Service that a special use permit is not required for winter access.
Um, I might change your word grooming because they don't have to have it groomed. We just need it to, they just need an agreement with the snowmobile club or Forest Service for access. So like, they just need to have a current agreement from the Forest Service, or from, yeah, so remove the word grooming.
Okay. All right, let's. Where's our, yeah, review our, anyway. Point number six for file number 23-33 Sawatch Base Camp CUP. Sawatch Base Camp must have a current agreement from the snowmobile club or confirmation from the Forest Service that a special use permit is not required for winter access.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we have a little bit of site plan.
Mm-hmm, I did there again. You want to borrow my computer?
I did it last time.
She's like, I had to do it all last time.
Edwards moves the plan and commission approve file number 23-34 Sawatch Base Camp, that country's site plan review with the following conditions. Number one, all statements and representations made by the applicant in this application and in hearing shall be binding and considered as conditions of approval. Number two, the applicant will ensure site preparation and your placement will not have an adverse effect on drainage or erosion. Number three, that the United States Forest Service suggests a survey to ensure proper location of property owners.
Which we can strike because it already has it.
Correct. And further finding, number one, the proposed site plan is, is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies contained in the Lake County Comprehensive Plan. Number two, that the proposed site plan conforms to the requirements and provisions of this code. Number three, that the proposed site plan adequately addresses the submitted requirement items. Number four, that the proposed site plan is consistent with and in harmony with the neighboring land uses and future intended land uses in the area. And number five, any potentially, any potential man-made or natural hazards have or will be adequately mitigated.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Joey Edwards?
Aye.
Abby Dolman?
Yes.
Heather Lind, aye. Okay, now the application will go to the county commissioners for their next meeting.
Thank you, board.
Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Although we adjourned.
Edwards seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for participating this evening and being here.
Thank you all.
Thanks for being thorough.
It's still, we probably need to actually.
We need to turn this, we need to stop recording.
We're still recording.